Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, July the 16th, 2024. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you for coming and joining us on the feed as well. As we normally do, we'll get started in a few minutes with a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance as we usually do for our meetings. As we go to that time, I would like for us to stop for just a minute and in our prayers and think about our country, think about the things that have happened over this last week, an attempted assassination of our former president and a person was a firefighter was killed in the line of fire at that time. Please think and pray for our country, pray for our families of everyone involved there and hopefully we won't, things like that won't happen in our country anymore. But it did and all we can do is just pray about it and hope that things will be, will be better. So please keep that in your thoughts and prayers as we go to our time of prayer tonight. Please join me now. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We get started tonight. I would like to stop just a minute and say some very special thank yous to our city staff and all of our volunteers and so many people who worked so hard this past weekend with our Blackberry Festival, our 21st Annual North Carolina Blackberry Festival in our downtown and here in Lenore and Caldwell County this past weekend. Great success. Thank goodness. It was great weather other than it was hotter than blazes, but that's to be expected in mid-July, I'm sure. But we appreciate everyone and all the efforts that were made by all of our staff. Thank you to Brenda Floyd, our Main Street Downtown Development and Main Street Director, Sarah Wirt, who acted as, of course, as the event coordinator. Matthew Anthony came back and helped out. We appreciate that. And Kaywin Horne, our past director, also was there to help out during this week. But our public works staff, I want to thank Duke Moore and, of course, the maintenance staff for all they did. Our police and fire and both of our chiefs were there the whole time I saw and most of their staff were there and did so many things. Our recreation staff, thank you for all the work there. Public utilities, just everyone and all of our volunteers. And we have such a wonderful group of volunteers that come out and we had tons of them that were actually struggling, I'm telling you, on late Friday night and then Saturday to find a place to get cool for a few minutes because it was, it was warm. But it was a great event and thank you for everything that was done there. And also let me back up and say thank you as well for our Fourth of July ceremonies. Phillip and the Recreation Department, thank y'all for putting on a great event for our Fourth of July celebration and all the things happened there. Firework show again was great. We had a lot of people that were very excited about the fireworks show, a lot of great comments from that. So thank everyone for all that and again, the protection of everyone. Police and fire were out everywhere watching and making sure everyone was safe. So a lot of good things happening in the month of July in Lenore and Caldwell County. So we do appreciate that very much. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone. All right, as we do, we'll get started with matters scheduled for public hearing this evening. We do have two items on here. First is a rezoning. This is for 420 Virginia Street. We will hold this hearing to consider rezoning the property located at 420 Virginia Street. That's North Carolina PIN number 2749338334 from I-2 Heavy Industrial to R-6 High Density Residential as requested by property owner Marcella Hines and based on the following consistency statement and staff's recommendations. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it protects the distinctive residential character of Lenore's neighborhoods from the encroachment of an inappropriate non-residential development. This rezoning also helps to standardize and move this area towards practical zoning. All right, I will open the public hearing and I first will hear from our planning director, Hannah Wees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This site, 420 Virginia Street, it is developed with a single-family home and has been since 1950. It is zoned I-2, which is our heavy industrial district. The applicants requesting the zoning change in order to subdivide and build another house on the property. And since it is zoned industrial residential subdivision in another house is not permitted, but this would be permitted with R-6 zoning. Like I said, the house was built in 1950 before Lenore had a zoning map. And it's just likely that the site was assigned industrial zoning because there are quite a few large industrial tracts nearby. And those were possibly going to expand back then. But the staff report, it compares this rezoning case with a similar one from 2022 up on Underdown, Underdown Avenue, the dead end portion that has single-family houses all around that was also assigned industrial zoning. And all of that was adjacent to the former Bernhardt facilities and those homes likely housed workers for the industrial uses nearby, which is also the case here. So like the consistency statement stated, the case is consistent with the comprehensive plan, meets several policy goals, protects the residential character of the neighborhoods, prevents encroachment of inappropriate non-residential development, and promotes affordable housing for people in all stages of life, and increases density in a high-density zone or nearby high-density zone. So I want to submit the staff report for the record, which also contains that consistency statement. And I am available for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions of Hannah?
Yes, the Planning Board did approve it as well.
Yeah.
For the city. Any questions of Hannah? Okay, we are in a public hearing. I'll open anyone who would like to address the council concerning this public hearing concerning the rezoning of 420 Virginia Street. And seeing no one. Okay. All right, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any recommendations, please.
Mr. Mayor, considering that it meets with the, is consistent with our statement, I recommend that we approve this request for rezoning.
Okay. I have a motion of Councilmember Stevens to approve the rezoning for 420 Virginia Street as presented by planning staff and to council. No other questions? I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We are missing one council member tonight. Mr. Perdue is out of town. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on then to our second public hearing. This is a special use permit for 111 Fairview Drive Northwest. This is a quasi judicial public hearing and will be held to consider the requested special use permit as submitted by Dawn Curtin for a proposed childcare center with offices and meeting space in the B-6 district for property located at 111 Fairview Drive. This is North Carolina PIN number 2749130104 and North Carolina PIN 2749120839. And based on the findings on page five of the submitted staff report, it's subject to the following four conditions. These are: One, the applicant must maintain the street yard landscaping along Fairview Drive where it abuts residential zoning and add exterior doors to the classrooms as is required for egress. A zoning permit will be required. Number two is any new lighting for the daycare use shall be fully cut off and shielded so as to eliminate and minimize light spillover onto adjacent residential properties. Number three are valid permits and inspections must be obtained for this use, including and other federal, state, or local regulations that apply. And number four, the applicant must obtain zoning and sign permits from the Lenore Planning Department within two years of the issuance of the SUP. All proposed changes must adhere to Section 817, which is B-6 Transitional Business Design, District Design Standards of the Lenore Zoning Ordinance. Those are the conditions of that. I will open the public hearing and I will turn it over to Mr. War for a minute for explanation of the special use quasi judicial.
We have these probably one or two a year, so it always helps to have a reminder about the ground rules for these. You all sit essentially acting as judges in this case, which means, you know, you can't have any preconceived notions about this. You should keep an open mind. If you've had any conversations with anyone about this, you need to disclose those. If you've received any information generally about it, gone out and viewed the site, you're not supposed to do that. And if you have any special relationship with Ms. Curtin, the applicant, or anything like that, you'd need to disclose those. So if any of you has those, you need to disclose those now. Okay, that's good. And then essentially, what you'll be doing is you'll be receiving sworn testimony to determine whether the applicant meets the rules of the special use permit. You've already decided that if someone meets those rules, they are entitled to the, to the issuance of the permit. So you have to determine if the evidence meets the requirements of the permit as set out in the testimony you'll hear and any documents that are submitted to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions of our attorney concerning this? Okay. All right. Hannah, we'll let you speak. She has to be sworn as well, please. And anyone who would like to address the council will also need to be sworn, just like she was this day. So please.
All right, yes, this next case is special use permit SUP 124 for 111 Fairview Drive. And the staff report starts on page 15 of the agenda packet. Currently, it's owned by Fairview Presbyterian Church of Lenore. It's under contract by the Anola Group, which is the organization that operates this childcare center. They do already operate in Lenore, but they are looking to relocate. And Fairview Presbyterian Church no longer meets at this site. So yeah, this property is zoned B-6 and a daycare childcare center is a special use in this zoning district. So they just plan to convert this church building into offices and to have six classrooms in the Fellowship Hall, which is the building that faces West Harper and at the corner of Fairview Drive. And if you'll turn to the special use permit findings, it's on page six of the staff report, which is 18 of the council packets, and you'll see the findings of fact. And if they meet these findings, that means that the permit should be granted. And these eight conditions, what the daycare has to conform to. And staff has also recommended those four extra conditions on front of the agenda packet. So as for exterior changes and for driveways and parking, they are all adequate and for, and they meet the B-6 zoning standards. They will be adding exterior doors to each classroom, which is required for childcare centers in the state. But there's already an established driveway, already established parking areas that more than provide enough parking for this use. As for impacts on surrounding properties, occupation of existing buildings that are currently vacant should be an improvement since the church is closed and vacant buildings can be kind of hazardous to neighborhoods. And as for landscaping and screening, since the site abuts the Statement Court subdivision to the north, that's zoned residential. And so landscaping along Fairview Drive on the subject property will need to be maintained. And as for signage, the daycare proposes to reuse existing signs and they'll meet Lenore's sign ordinance. They will be required to get a sign permit. And then any exterior lighting will be incidental to the childcare center needs and it will be shielded and cut off from residential properties. And that will be reviewed during zoning permitting as well, if any is proposed. And any new changes to the property will conform to the B-6 zoning standards. The site does basically meet it now. They're all brick buildings. And the childcare center will operate 7:30 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. Their enrollment's at 48 children. They're aged infant to five years old. There are minimal, if any, harmful impacts to surrounding properties. So this is going forward with staff recommendation of approval. And yeah, if you have any other questions for me, I can answer them. The applicants are also here. They can answer questions as well. Oh, Planning Board recommended approval of this as well.
Thank you.
Would you like to submit your staff report as an exhibit to your testimony?
Yes, I also want to submit the staff report for the record.
Thank you. All right, any questions of Hannah, our planning director this time?
Hannah, just a question regarding sidewalks of all things.
Sure.
With the B requirements.
So in B-6, it's kind of different from other commercial zones. B-6 requires conformance with zoning standards for new development, not necessarily for substantial improvement. There is a pedestrian, you know, flow and movement sidewalk requirement for new development. And since their changes are so minimal, they are not required to participate in sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, we are in public hearing. So if there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this special use permit for 111 Fairview Drive, applicants are here, but unless you, we need them to speak. You're welcome to if you'd like, but if not, okay. Any other questions? Hannah. Okay, I will close the public hearing then and turn it over to council for any discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve this item B, special use permit as presented with conditions being met.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Thomas that we approve the special use permit for 111 Fairview Drive as presented.
And if I might suggest that that motion also include adopting the findings of fact recommended by staff and delegating to the mayor the authority to sign the final order representing the will of the council.
What he said, absolutely.
We've got to check off those boxes.
Will you make sure that the city court gets your recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. That a motion was from Councilmember Thomas. Would that add it to it?
I did. I was ready to rattle it back.
You were ready to give that, weren't you? Okay, no other questions or concerns? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Write that down.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We appreciate that. Thank you, Hannah, for your work on that and the staff and the planning board.
We need it, too.
And thank y'all. Okay, we'll move on then to consent agenda items who are next on our agenda. That would consist of minutes of the city council meeting, Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Item B are minutes of the closed session minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, as reviewed by the city attorney, city council, and the city manager. Item C are minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 25th, 24. Item D is a resolution for the Caldwell County Animal Care and Enforcement Ordinance. This is a recommendation of approval of a resolution affirming support for Caldwell County to enforce the animal care and enforcement care ordinance within the city limits of Lenore in order to comply with new regulations set in play by the state of North Carolina. Item E is a resolution. This is a lead service not lead, the lead?
It's lead.
Lead, okay. Lead service line, identity, could be the way. Identification inventory. North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has offered a drinking water state revolving fund for lead service line replacement as DWSRF-LSLR loan in amount of $500,000 to conduct a lead service line identification inventory. This is a recommendation for approval of the resolution and required acceptance documents as submitted. Item F is a proposal. This is for field inspections, recommending approval of Duke's proposal to conduct field inspections to assist in the completion of the lead service line inventory project as required by the Environmental Protection Agency. Duke's, I assume we're talking about Duke Energy?
No.
Duke's proposal? Okay.
Duke's is the company.
Duke's is the company. Proposal for visual inspection of service lines is at the rate of $75 per line on the customer side and $75 per line on the utility side. And item G is a construction contract. This is for the Martin Luther King Jr. Recreation Center Improvements. Recommendation is awarding the construction contract for the MLK Junior Recreation Center Facility Improvements Project, exclusive of tennis courts resurfacing, which are not included in this part, to Precision Contracting Company for a contract price of $203,417. Precision Contracting Company is appropriately licensed to perform the work, has successfully completed past projects within the city of Lenore, and is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Those are your items A through G. I will open it up for any discussion or motion concerning the consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda item, items A through G as submitted.
I have a motion from Councilmember Prescottwood that we approve the consent agenda items A through G as submitted. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Please come forward. If you will, please give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Janet Huntsinger, 3340 Plateau Road, Newton, North Carolina.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about the public bathrooms at the Hogwaller Stage area. We've recently, a group of, two couples, me, my husband, and Rick and Diana have purchased 117 Main Street with the, you know, the 1841 diner and the Hogwaller Stage in the back. In the two years prior to that, we've only seen the bathrooms open one day, and that was during the Wood Fire Smoke Festival. The, we have been working with the city to try to get them open on a regular basis. And for the two weeks ending in the Blackberry Festival, they were open 24 hours a day. And they are being used by people for things they shouldn't be used for. And then after the Blackberry Festival, they were cleaned by the city and then locked during the day. So it's been a struggle. What we propose is that there's a, we have a lease, 30-year lease with the city for the bathrooms. That is a dollar a year. And we want to review that, revisit that, and give us, as the owners of the property, access to the bathrooms in order to keep them clean and keep them open and keep them secured during the night hours. And we have made several proposals to the, to the city of how we could do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll take that, I guess, Mr. Hildebrandt will take that into consideration, Mr. War. Legal stance for all that, see what, what needs to be done and check into the other things that you've talked about.
And we have submitted some suggestions to the city for, for possible things we could do.
Okay.
Okay. We just want clean, good, open bathrooms for the public. And you know, public bathrooms are notoriously nasty. And the city just doesn't have the wherewithal to keep them clean all the time. And we would be there as the property owners and we could keep them open when they're supposed to be open, locked when they're supposed to be locked, kept up and cleaned.
Okay.
In fact, in the past, there was a homeless man who would break the handle off and live in there. So they've not really been utilized.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Wakefield, come forward. If you will, give us your name and address.
Most of you know me. I'm Rick Wakefield. I live here, Lenore, 23 years, 529 Hyatt Rock and Drive. Most of you know where I'm at. Also, several years ago, I invited most of you, I invited all of you, everybody that was here then, to my store to talk about restrooms. I believe most of you should remember, Mr. Bill, Mayor, I've had my store here for going on six years. I've been told all this time, we didn't have public restrooms. That's why we had porta-johns. After purchasing this building, I find out about the lease that we have, and we've had public restrooms all along. As the building owner and my business is going in there, I'm open seven days a week. I have employees every single day. I think you guys should look at our proposal. I think it's fair. We've been trying to take care of this for, ever since we purchased the, the building. I have pictures of now. Throughout the night, every night, I check those restrooms, every single night, 2:30 in the morning, 3:30 in the morning. I've thrown away urinated clothing. It's just past few weeks. I picked up the trash. I picked up the toilet paper. We want them clean. Most of you, I've talked to you, I want restrooms for my employees. I want restrooms so people can come down. We're planning on having the Hogwaller Stage open, back playing music every Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. The stage will be up for rent for people to come out, do weddings, any other kind of things. So we want to make sure ourselves that the restrooms are clean, taken care of. The gentleman that had broken, and I believe you can look back, I think he broke the handle two, three, four times. Once we purchased the property, everything went through. We worked with Lenore PD. They came up, had him removed. He's not been back. You know, like I said, we will be there seven days a week. So I would really like for you guys to, to just look at the proposal and consider it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
We'll investigate into this. Thank you very much, for sure. Anyone else who would like, yes, Jennifer. Again, we know you, but we'll need to give your name and address and all that.
My name is Jennifer Indacott. I address as 107 Main Street. I own Furcot Formables in downtown. This is my, now, we'll call them my annual post-Blackberry state of the, or address to the council. I would like to thank the following departments that I saw working at all hours of the day and night during and after the festival. The Lenore Police Department for patrolling at night on Friday evening and Saturday morning. And from what I hear, arresting some people that were doing bad things, vandalizing, stealing things from the vendor booths. It's unfortunate we had this happen, but I commend the uniformed officers for personally checking in with the vendors Saturday morning to see if anything was in place, out of place with their booths and explaining what occurred overnight. There was nothing but transparency and professionalism in dealing with this unfortunate situation. So thank you for that. The Street Division for a quick cleanup of our streets and sidewalks after the festival finished late into the evening on Saturday night. I was still at my establishment at 11:30 and they were just finishing up at 11:30 with more energy than any working person should have at that night, that time of night. Sanitation rocked it. I don't know how to sugarcoat that any more than it is. It is, they were great. We left our trash can on the sidewalk specifically for patrons and vendors to use on our end of the block. It was filled up multiple times by festival goers and it was emptied multiple times throughout the weekend. Team Lenore and the Public Works Department that never stopped walking around and getting stuff done in whatever fashion it needed to be done. And I'm talking from 7:00 AM to 11:30 PM both evenings. The Lenore Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services, I saw at least one instance of a medical need. of a medical need, and it was dealt with swiftly and positively as an outside observer. Any other department I missed that might have been working behind the scenes, whether that was Public Utilities, you mentioned Parks and Rec. I'm sorry if I didn't see you, but you're all so appreciated. Last, but definitely not least, I would like to thank the city council for approving the social district. For the second year in a row, it has made a positive impact on my own business. To compare numbers, last year, we did 3X what we did in the 2022 Blackberry Festival. This year, we did almost 4X what the 2022 Blackberry Festival numbers were for my establishment, and this is in thanks to the social district. I would still like for you to consider expanding the social district to seven days a week. We have more and more businesses opening in downtown Lenore that would benefit from that themselves. I personally would like to utilize such services on my days off on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, if it were to be expanded. But most of all, to the departments that did the Blackberry Festival, Downtown Development, the Volunteers, the LDA, and all of you, thank you. Thank you, thank you for a wonderful weekend from all the businesses that I talk to. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And again, thank you all of our staff for a great job. It's what Service Beyond Measure is all about and doing those things. So thank you so much. Anyone else who'd like to address the council during this time? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so I'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrandt.
Mr. Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. Summer Concert Series will continue this Friday, July 19th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM with the band Red Dirt performing on the downtown stage. The band Southern Thunder will perform on Friday, July 26th during their same times from 7:00 to 10:00. The movie Kung Fu Panda 4 will be shown at the LHS facility on Saturday, July 27th, beginning at 7:00 PM. And the 50th Annual Harambe Festival will be held the week of August 3 through August 9th. Those events will be held daily at the Martin Luther King Center, and we'll have those things outlined on our website, seallenore.com for more information on that. And...
So, yeah, the event is correct. Where it's located is not. It shows that the Jump Street Drive is going to be at the Lenore High School campus. It's going to be at Martin Luther King's on the field.
Correct. And that's going to be held?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, each evening at 6:00 PM. So I want to correct that and make sure I had it right. Tonight, you have one item for action, actually. Acceptance of offer to purchase. Sealed Air Corporation has contacted us about purchasing the fire pump house, which is located on their property in Hudson. The city acquired this pump house back when we purchased the Hudson Water System back in 2000, or actually, 1999. They made an offer of $1,000 for this to go back. They've maintained this property for the last 20 years and invested, I think, 160-plus thousand in maintaining that pump house. So they just want to go back and take ownership of that. So if council directs us, we'll go back and advertise that for upset bids beginning Saturday and bring it back to you for final action within the next few weeks. If you have questions, I can defer to Dr. Church. He's dealt with them for the last several months on that project.
Okay. You heard the request for acceptance of the offer to purchase from Sealed Air Corporation in the amount of $1,000 is submitted by Seth Bradshaw, plant manager for Sealed Air, for that pump house.
Does this need to include the direction of the 10-day upset bid period?
We've got to follow the statutes. Advertisement begins Saturday, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we permit the city manager to proceed with the acceptance of the offer and the follow-up 10-day upset bid period.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Stevens that we proceed with the city manager to accept the offer after all the things have been met that we have to do on that. There was a legal advertisement, I've noticed, the offer also published in the news talking for 10 days, by the way. So any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of the city attorney, Mr. War. Anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anything other to add than what we've already talked about tonight. Thank you for, again, all the good work and hard work that has been going on for the last few weeks, and we appreciate it. And thank y'all for being here tonight and bringing the recommendations to us. We'll certainly look into that situation. Anything else from the council members to come up tonight?
I'd like to add something in regards to Harambe, which is the oldest event in our city. And I would like to also thank Mrs. Floyd and the staff, city personnel, for a great event on Saturday. I was there for a little while, but the heat got the best of me, and I went home. But thank you. But Harambe has a connotation like it's an African-American event, but it isn't. Harambe means pulled together. Harambe means to love. And I would like to just encourage my colleagues here, if you, and you as well, if you have not been to the MLK Center in one of these weekly events, I would like to encourage you and invite you to attend. It's an all-week event, and I think Lester, as well as every other staff personnel, does a great job in putting together Harambe for a whole week. So I would like to see our city personnel, our city council, all there supporting this. And the events will be posted on the city website, and you can choose the night or the day that you want to attend. So just encourage you to support the Harambe Festival.
Thank you. It is a great festival. You're exactly right. And we all try to attend, you know, each year. I know that we have a senior citizens night, one night, and then a recognition banquet one night for sure during the week. And then there are several other events that go on. I haven't seen the schedule yet, but I'm sure it will be coming out. But there are some great events. They have a great kickoff, usually on the weekend with games and that kind of thing are being played. So it's a great event. Please come out to it and certainly enjoy it. And it is the oldest festival in Caldwell County. So very proud to have the 50th Annual Harambe Festival coming up.
I would like to make an announcement. Next week on Thursday, we're going to have, at Unity Park in Community Garden, we're going to have a Learn, Grow, Share event. Kay and Patrick Crouch will be out there performing at the gardens. And we're going to have snow cones from the blueberry patch and some tomato samples and some fresh vegetables to share.
What time?
5:00 to 7:00 PM.
5:00 to 7:00, next?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay. At the community gardens. Everyone knows where that is, I hope, so try to plan to attend that. Anything else to come before us? If not, we stand adjourned.
Play ball.
Play ball.